Well, I'm getting the heads up sign here, so I guess we're over.
We are live.
Good evening, this is the January 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have appeal number... Two thousand nineteen oh two, Claude Maselli. Ninety-nine Cliff Road. We're giving them an adjournment till the next meeting, which is January twenty-fourth. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Yeah. We have Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Barnes?
Worthington.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mrs. Barnes away. Alright. Appeal number two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three, Paul...
Wisniewski.
Thank you. Calliton, they're asking for an adjournment, and I guess to the next meeting?
They're adjourned for coordinated review until that's completed.
Alright, till the coordinated review, and we will post it when it is coming up.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Alright. Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Alright, which one is the... Next one too, wow. Busy night. Alright, appeal number two thousand nineteen dash oh oh one, Robert and Kathleen Glass. They're asking for an adjournment to two fourteen. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Appeal number two thousand eighteen zero five four, Joseph Calabrese, twenty-eight Beach Road, Laurel. Tax map number six hundred seventy-one two sixteen, RV forty zoning. For variances, indoor relief from chapter three oh one, section fifteen A one C. Where shed eight point three by twelve point three is six point six feet and eight point four feet from property lines. Minimum required is ten feet. Where attached outdoor shower is five point six seven feet from the property line, and minimum required is ten feet. Section fifteen A one D, where shed under a hundred and forty-four square feet is point nine and one feet from property lines. And point five eight feet from the detached garage or cabana building. And minimum required is five feet, with ten feet separation between buildings. Section two twenty-two E, where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-seven point eight three feet, and minimum required is forty feet. And where proposed additions increase gross floor area within the required rear yard. Representing an increase in degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing dwelling which is not permitted.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Michael A. Kimak, PO Box ten forty-seven, South Old New York.
You have the floor.
Esquire, but I always, I always sign off anyway, it's okay.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
K I M A C K. The applicant was here before you prior, last meeting. And it was at that particular time that it was adjourned to have one of the members go out and verify that there was no kitchen in the proposed pool house. Which occurred twice. The first time because of high water, couldn't get to the house. The second time, we were able to get in and verify that there isn't any kitchen in the pool house. And also, since that time, from the last meeting, the proposed pool has been reduced from fifteen by thirty, which required a variance, because it was into the rear yard setback to a size thirteen by twenty-five, does it not require a variance? So it's outside the, just outside the ten-foot setback. So we removed that as a variance requirement. The, the other variances are being asked for primarily are for as-built sheds and showers that had been on the property since my client had purchased it about seven years ago. Unbeknownst at that particular time that it was not within the, you know, within the setbacks. The conformance of the setbacks. So we're asking for the legalization of the location of the two existing sets in the shower. We're asking then also for the nonconformity, the existing deck is being replaced in kind with the proposed house, and the line of the existing house is being kept with the setback to the back property line, it's not being increased. That one corner that you can see jagged lines there. That's pretty much it, the proposed pool and the proposed deck would be raised, obviously, because there is some water conditions, but on occasion. And we saved, I think, about a hundred and twenty-five square feet by going from fifteen to by thirty down to thirteen by twenty-five. Are there any questions of me?
Is the applicant here?
He is indeed.
Please, let him step up. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Joseph Calabrese, twenty-eight Beach Road, Laurel, New York. One one nine four eight.
So, Mr. Calabrese, we received, the board received a letter dated January ninth, twenty nineteen, from Gerald Buck regarding the application, and just... indicating amongst a lot of other things, that the house has been rented on VRVO on a kind of a regular basis for vacation rentals, and so I was wondering if you could elaborate on that, or if you'd like to respond to that. Because I think as we discussed the last time, you were made aware that town of Riverhead rules don't permit rentals less than thirty days and require a permit, and I think you indicated that you hadn't been aware of that.
Yeah, so, that is correct. We did talk about this in the previous hearing, I was not aware of the thirty-day rule. I rented the house in the past, I rented less and less each year. It is no longer on VRVO, the listing is down. I thought by, by keeping my obligation to, because I would get a letter in the mail from Suffolk County to pay...
Hotel tax.
Taxes on, yeah, on renting it out. And I thought that that was my obligation, I wasn't trying, obviously wasn't trying to hide anything, otherwise I wouldn't admit to the rentals and pay the tax. What I learned last time when I was here, that, that does not, that's, I guess that's, this is a county rule, and that is a... The tax is a whole separate, it's a whole separate thing, so... While I thought I was doing the right thing by paying the taxes required, and I would, quarterly. I wasn't aware of the thirty-day rule, and so the listing is, at the moment is down.
So, because he's in his letter amongst a lot of other things, which we'll give you a copy of if you don't already have it, indicates that there were three reviews posted for April of twenty eighteen, two reviews posted for May of twenty eighteen, and one review posted for June. So it seems like it was rented very frequently in that manner, and I just... Making sure that you understand that, that's not permitted under the town code. And that we've actually, I think we brought eleven different Supreme Court actions for similar activity on other properties in the town within the last two years.
That is understood now, yes?
Okay. So, would you object to the board conditioning your approval on the preclusion of that type of rental, you know, without a permit? I mean, would have, would just basically say that you would agree to comply with the town code, which is thirty-day rentals and requires a permit?
Yes, I do, I agree.
Okay. I don't know, if you, I mean, I think there's a lot of other things in here you have to address, I mean, we have to look at, so...
Anybody have any more questions of the owner? Okay, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Nobody? Well, step up. If you would, just read, take your time. If you just, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Gerald Buck. Twelve Beach Road. Okay, I didn't quite get what was asked of, of the owner regarding the rental on VRVO. As far as I know, I mean, I checked on, on Monday, it was still on Airbnb, other sites.
So it's, you know, under the town code, as it currently reads, the minimum rental period is thirty days, and it requires a rental permit from our rental enforcement department.
Yes.
So... It's not permitted.
Exactly.
The town's been pretty aggressive in enforcing that code as well in the past couple of years, because it's become an issue, quality of life issue for neighbors that live near, that are not renting, that live nearby.
Yes, well, the purpose of my first letter was to demonstrate that it has been ongoing for the last close to seven years. That there was use of pictures of neighboring properties, sort of indicating that that beach was available for the use of the renters, when it was not. Mr. Calabrese, back in two thousand and thirteen, said that he would not use those letters, and he would take them down from the sites, and they never were taken down, they remain so right up to today.
So those, that really has no bearing on this application, that's between you and me?
Well, I guess what...
But I think you had some other things outlined in your letter relating to the dimensional relief requested, that you might want to elaborate on.
Yes, well, I guess the whole point of, of the third part of that letter with the map and so forth, was that transient rentals on a public road does not have the same effect as if in a private community. Primarily because the houses on that road all share a beach.
I understand.
Here's another, where's the other letter, Chrisa? I have the first one.
I believe it was attachment three, first page.
This is the January ninth letter that I'm looking at?
Yes.
So, I'm just, so, the, the complaints that you're, that you're making about the illegal rental should be made to the code enforcement division?
Right.
They'll handle that, but as far as the appeal goes, we just alert the applicant to the fact that what is being discussed and what's been happening is not permitted.
Right.
But you had some other specific...
You don't have that one going.
Ah, that's one, okay, this is the other one.
The second letter?
Yes, relating to the dimensional, those are the things that would be relevant for this board, so you should discuss those.
Okay, well, I understand there's been a last-minute change to the size of the pool, which reduces it, so it's, it's no longer requiring a variance for the rear yard setback. However, when I reviewed the drawing on Monday at the building department, I, I noticed inconsistencies, for instance, the proposed rear deck is only, well, now it's about ten feet from the property line, but isn't the requirement for the deck different than the pool? So that it would require a variance to be that close to the rear property line?
The deck would, it's a structure, so it would require, if it's too close to the rear property line, if it doesn't meet the code, it would require a variance, because it's a structure.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that, that was not mentioned.
Okay.
Okay, the second one was that the pool was only less than ten feet from the garage structure. And I thought that had to have a ten-foot separation as well.
I don't have the rules in front of me.
I don't have the code, well, I can, I can check, but, okay, keep, keep...
This stuff will check out, go ahead.
Keep going, we're in a little...
Okay, now, now, it's interesting on the garage, because it says a second-floor deck that overhangs the face of the building. That, that, the face of that deck is only two feet from the edge of the pool. So I think that setback should be from, from the second-floor deck.
Okay. So those, all the things that you're talking about are outlined in your, in your January ninth letter?
Yes.
And so, we can review that.
Likewise, there's separation from the, the pool and/or deck from the shed, I call it shed number one to the south. That scales, there's no dimension given, but it scales less than ten feet. The other thing that occurs is that there's, there's a calculation, excuse me, there's a calculation for impervious surface. That the drawing states it meets the requirement of being below fifteen percent. If I take all the roof areas, the sheds, the existing driveway, I get a twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And then, I didn't know whether the pool would be considered an impervious surface. Indeed, when rain falls on it, no water goes to the ground. So with the pool, that increases to twenty-eight percent. Then I'm a little bit confused by the term that the garage now is considered a existing pool house cabana. How can something be an existing accessory structure to something that's not even there yet? There's probably a mechanism for, for the conversion of that garage to a pool house. It's, it's a pity Leroy Barnes isn't here, because I think he issued the, the C of O back in the day that restricted the use of that garage to just storage above, and not being finished on, on the inside with either insulation or sheet rock, and only minimal electric. And, and now it's, it's finished, well, I, I guess the board went to see it, it's finished, it has a bathroom. So, I, I'm, I'm questioning the, if the correct procedure is being followed to convert that garage.
Okay. Okay.
There were other mistakes on the drawing, which are sort of arithmetic mistakes that I list in the next paragraph. Side yard. For instance, a side yard on, on the, on the north side goes to the house dimensionally, but there's a deck in front of that, shouldn't it go to the, the deck? For the minimum side yard? So that would reflect a, a correction of the aggregate side yard dimension. The garage on, on the survey was listed as a one and a half story, and now it's listed as two, so that should be conformed to the fact that it is one and a half. Then I wish the architect was here, because there, there seems to be an oversight. If you extend the rear deck of the house, at the level of the house, it's roughly two feet above the floor of that pool house. So how does one gain access into the pool house? Not only that, the, the clearance under the overhanging second-story deck is maybe six feet, maybe a little bit more? Again, there are, there were no elevations given, so the lack of information is sort of profound on these drawings. But it, it should be checked out. Oh, let's see what else. There's no mention of what type of pool this is. On, on the east side, there's just a, a one thin line, no thickness for a coping. Is it an in-ground pool, a gunite pool, a liner pool? How deep is it? What is the profile, what, where is, where is the, the dry well that you need to have to empty it? You know, there, there are a lot of things that, that are just not clarified, spelled out at all. Let's see what else. There are, there are no steps shown from the rear deck to the backyard. So how does one access that shower that is back there? They have to go all the way to the front of the property, go all the way around them. We're also in a, a theme of floodplain. So that the floor, the floor elevations become crucial in terms of whether the existing house has, has a, a high enough clearance between the lowest structural member and, and the floodplain, I, I don't know. Because that information isn't given. I understand, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the proposed construction is on top of the existing septic system. So by necessity, they would have to create a two-code septic system. I don't know whether that can even be done without raising the house. Because there's not enough vertical separation between the floor and, and the water table to pitch pitch the drainage of, of a septic system for a gravity feed system? It's up in the air, I don't know. There should also be a test hall for the groundwater and a percolation test for, where does this all go? I don't know whether you saw it when you visited the property, but I've known this house for over sixty years, and, and the house had always had water underneath it. I don't know whether it's a depression there, but it was it was always wet, if not reflective with water on the surface under the house. So the water table is extremely high there. Which of course is a concern for everyone. In fact, one of the neighbors, when she heard that Joey was proposing a swimming pool, she laughed and said, "He doesn't need one, he already has one under the house, because we all remember the water sitting there." Then there's of course the matter of substantial improvement. There's, there's no documentation in terms of what the market value of the existing structure is, and the proposed cost of the improvement. So, we're just left to guess. I would, I would say that you're probably into a substantial reconstruction. Where does the pool equipment go? Are we gonna put another shed on this property? I don't know. And then of course, there's, there's no indication of, of pool safety. Where's the fencing, the gates, all of the things that we all worry about when it comes to swimming pools? I might have missed a few items in this letter, but that's basically the sum of, of that letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just speak to the owner again? Hi.
Hi.
So you, you have been renting the apartment out without the proper Riverhead town permits?
Yeah, apparently so.
Well, yes or no?
Yes.
And, and how many other rentals do you own?
How many other?
You know, in Suffolk County?
None.
This is the only property you own?
Yes.
So you were unaware of the rental permit law?
Right, yes.
Alright, I think one of the things we'd like to see is your architect, next meeting.
Okay.
Bring him in, we wanna hear about it.
Okay. Sure.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Step up, if you have something to say. Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Alright, state your name and your address.
My name is Terrence McShane, I live at thirty-four Beach Road, which is next door to the Calabrese house. I've known Joe since he's moved in, him and his wife Jamie, their two kids. I just wanna say, they're wonderful people, they're excellent neighbors. They've rented their house, but they've rented it to people who you'd never even know were there, families, little kids, very friendly individuals. I have never had a problem, and literally there is, if you look at whatever map you've got, there's probably a driveways width between our houses. I've never heard a peep. If nothing else, I've had wonderful conversations with these people. My family's been on the street since nineteen ninety-four full-time, but we've rented since I was six years old on the street. The house, I have known the people who've lived there for the last, I guess, however long the house has been there, from the, the the people from the last, the first who built it onward. I can tell you the history of the house is good, it's, well, probably not as good as you've just heard, but pretty darn well. I just wanted to say that they're good people, and they're good neighbors, and that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Go ahead.
I will keep this brief. You want to adjourn to have the architect come to the next meeting, and I know that there was a lot of questions raised by that individual. Is there a way that you may be able to give something to me in writing, so that I can show the architect exactly what he needs to address?
I think the board can give you Mr. Buck's letter.
Okay, I won't, if we gotta come back, I'm not going to spend your time basically going over some of that. It's easy, the address at the next meeting. I mean, some of that, the, the deck is within the ten-foot setback, I mean, it's not within the ten-foot setback. It will be raised, obviously, it doesn't have to be shown for the zoning purposes, the deck can be up against the, the proposed pool house, I don't think there's any restriction against that. Side yard setbacks are boxed in on the drawing, shown there. I know he had a question about the overall density factor. The pool is not designed until we actually have an ability with which to get the zoning approval. But it will be raised, and the septic system will be relocated, and we have to go to Department of Health. And a new system put in. So that may answer some of your questions. So that may answer some of your questions.
Okay. Okay, we have an extra copy we can give you, so why don't you step up and write it?
This is okay, Chris, I even have this stand.
Well, I would...
You have anything else to say?
I do, yes, I would, if I could add on to that.
Sure.
We came two months ago for this, for the first hearing and what came out of that meeting was the question of whether the pool house was rented and habitable and it had a kitchen in it. We adjourned that meeting to this meeting so that we can go out and visit, visit the house. My wife came during a snowstorm, drove three hours each way. We couldn't access the house, like Mike said. A month later, I came, drove three hours each way to go to the house to show the representative that there was no kitchen in fact, that my neighbor was lying. I come here tonight, taking off of work again, drive two and a half hours and probably drive two and a half hours back tonight. I just simply, I, I just, I don't know, is there any way that this can get settled anytime soon? Not to mention, this work is all for nothing if I can't get it done before the season, so at this point, it makes no sense.
I think we'll have a decision for you next meeting. But questions have been raised and we have to give the opposition to your plans a chance to let us look into what they're complaining about, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? All right, let's make a motion for the next meeting.
Which is when?
January twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number eighteen dash zero five four, Joseph Calabrese, be adjourned to April, January twenty-fourth.
Second.
All right, Mr. Whitmore.
Hi.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so see you folks in the next meeting. Sorry for your troubles about traveling, but that's the way it is. Okay, off we go.
Appeal number two thousand eighteen zero five eight, Joseph LaRusso, twenty ninety-seven and twenty-one oh seven, North Waiting River Road, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred fifty-four two three and four, RB eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one for proposed subdivision unmerger where proposed lot areas are twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-eight square feet and minimum required is eighty thousand square feet and where proposed lot widths are one hundred and one hundred twenty-five feet and minimum required is one hundred and seventy-five feet for existing dwelling fifty-four two four, section thirty-one where proposed side yard setback is twenty-one point nine feet and minimum required is thirty feet. For proposed dwelling on fifty-four two three, section thirty, where proposed first floor living area is one thousand sixty point six square feet and minimum required is one thousand five hundred square feet. Section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is twenty-eight feet and minimum required is thirty feet and proposed combined side yard is fifty-six feet and minimum required is sixty-five feet.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go ahead.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Tracy Shalesky, JW Consulting, P O Box six seven four, Corum, New York, one one seven two seven.
And you are?
Agent for owner, Joseph LaRusso.
Off you go.
So the last time I was here, there was a question about the driveway. My associate spoke to the owner, he said that the owners are willing to put in whatever the town requires them to put in. They didn't have any solid plans about it. The impervious surface calculation that's on the survey does include that driveway. So I think that, you know, loosely, they had a plan for like blacktop or concrete, but again, it's not something that, you know, they're not willing to, you know, make compensations for as far as the town requirements are concerned. The last thing was the single and separate, which had been submitted to the town attorney in the summer sometime, I'm thinking like July because I have it, I had uploaded it to my records, July thirteenth, so I'm pretty sure it went in. And that's where the confusion had begun about, there was like a fifty, fifty feet in question and it went back and forth between the town attorney and, I think Greg is the planner on it? Or am I getting, yeah, Greg is the planner. So it would, went back and forth between them. I never got any notes back from the town attorney as far as when it was merged back. And usually, I'm pretty adept at reading these things myself and figuring it out, but it's a little convoluted, so I really can't say when it had become merged back. I would defer to the town attorney, I don't know if you guys have that information? I wasn't able to get it by this afternoon.
Okay, we don't have any information.
Oh, okay.
Other than, we didn't, we only had, there was the, there's the title. But it's not a, what you provided wasn't a si- single and separate search or a title search with covenants and restrictions or anything like that? What did you?
No, we had, we had, we had a chain of title that started everything off, and I think that's what the board had wanted, was a chain of title. So that was the original document that was submitted to the town attorney that kicked off doing a series of title searches
Okay.
that had copies of everything.
Okay, so I do have to get those from Laura?
I have copies of them, I know, but it wasn't like enough. That, that is what was emailed.
Was that prepared by a title company?
Yeah, American Abstracts, and they're certified. Certified, you know, certified and insured.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Who's got the reading?
I do. I, I appeal, I, appeal number eighteen dash fifty-eight, Joseph LaRusso. I move that the appeal of twenty ninety-seven and twenty-one oh seven on North Waiting, on North Waiting River Road in Waiting River, tax map number six hundred dash fifty-four two three and four, RB zone, eighty zoning for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one for proposed subdivision unmerged where proposed lot area is twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-eight square feet and the minimum required is eighty thousand square feet and where proposed lot widths are one hundred and one hundred and twenty-five and the minimum required is one seventy-five feet for existing dwelling fifty-four dash two dash four, section thirty-one where proposed side yard setback is twenty-one point nine feet and a minimum required is thirty feet. Proposed dwelling fifty-four dash two three, section thirty, where proposed first floor living area is one thousand sixty point six square feet and a minimum required is fifteen hundred square feet. Section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is twenty-eight feet and the minimum required is thirty feet and a proposed combined side yard setback, oh, I'm sorry, side yard is fifty-six feet and a minimum required is sixty-five feet. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmore.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeal's been granted and you know the process from now on.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appeal number two thousand eighteen zero sixty-one, do you have affidavit? The affidavits and the photos of the posting?
Sure, look at her and blame her, yeah, all right, we know you're kind. That's all right, that's all right.
How many chickens?
Do you want to test that? That's from the people.
How many chickens, ma'am? Three, wow.
What time is breakfast?
Uh, seven a.m.
Are they those big pluck chickens or?
No. They're really, they're like three pounds and they're, they're, they have fluffy feathers. They're silvery.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if you kindly go up to the microphone, I will swear you... You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go ahead?
Yes, I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
My name is Chris Gocio and I live at six one eight seven North Country Road, Waiting River, New York.
Let's, let's hear, let's hear about the chicks.
Basically, we have three pet chickens and we erected up a, the coop in the run. And we weren't aware that at the time when we did it, the location had to be a certain distance off the house because we've had a couple of other homes in Waiting River where you always had, you know, chicken coop put up. It's not unsightly or anything like that, I don't know if the...
We were there.
Oh, okay. So basically, we're trying to be able to keep it where it is, if possible.
Well, we'll just have to check if there's any opposition out in the audience.
Yes, nobody out there is.
Doesn't seem to be.
Nobody here but us.
That probably, that, that shed is probably anchored, right?
Uh, yes.
It probably has electricity in it?
No, I have an extension cord that goes to a light, that's it.
And that's enough to make the chickens warm?
Excuse me?
That's enough to make the chickens warm in the winter?
Uh, it depends, right now, it's, it seems to be doing the job, so we should be okay.
How many eggs do you produce a day?
Uh, anywhere from one to two, sometimes three, depends. In the summertime, when it's real hot, they don't produce as much, but it's...
So the three chickens are slacking.
Excuse me? Yeah. Unfortunately, one wasn't able to survive.
Time for some of the chickens in a vote. Let's have a reading.
I move that the appeal, Teresa Gustos, at sixty-one eighty-seven North Country Road, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred dash fifty-seven dash two dash seven point three, RB eighty zoning for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-nine A one B, where accessory building in the side yard is twenty-two point two feet from the property line and the minimum required is twenty-five feet and where the accessory building is seven feet from the dwelling and the minimum required is ten feet. Be granted in accordance with the application and the sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmore.
Aye.
Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you and your chickens will have a coop to hang out in, so best of luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Beat them a little bit more, will you?
Mr. Gocio, are you rent, related to the Gocio in South Hall?
Don't blame me, he's my brother, yes.
Is he really? Okay. So they're all the chickens, that's why they don't produce more than two, like every other day?
Well, the type of chicken they are, they only deal a hundred and seventy two weeks a year where other chickens do like three hundred, six hundred, twenty. Plus they're that older, so it's not that bad.
Time for chicken soup?
No.
Not yet?
No, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. What do you want, to slaughter these poor guys or? They're probably...
Sometimes I watch TV.
All right, okay, sorry.
They have names, I assume, right?
They do, I have Turkey Girl, Baby Girl, and Laura.
I wish them luck in the coming year. In the meantime, I hear a motion to adjourn from the last meeting, last meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are they friendly chickens?
Yes.
I remember going out with a girl in the early eighties and I used to get attacked by her chickens all the time.
Poor chickens.
They were like really vicious chickens and I, I have a little bias against chickens, I want to tell you. I don't want to ask the reason why they were attacking them so well.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
I'll show you a picture, tell me if any of the attack ones.